All right, welcome, and we will call to order our study meeting of the West Valley City Council. This May twenty third, twenty twenty three. And it is four thirty PM, we are in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We would like to excuse Councilman Fitziamanu tonight. And at the table, we have Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Chrisison, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Westone, Councilman Hune, myself. And we're joined by Mr. Pyle, our city manager, and Ms. Hammick, our city recorder. And I'll now turn the time to the council for discussion or motion on our minutes from May sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
Go ahead. I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Thank you. Have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you, and those pass. We now have a review of our regular meetings tonight. Were there any changes or things we need to look at?
Yes, ma'am, there's an update to the proposed development agreement on the Mingo application, so we wanted to have Mr. Pastrick present that to you. We're ready to do that.
Let's do that. Mr. Pastrick.
There he is, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Pastor, Community Development Department. And Nicole, if you're able to promote me, oh, thank you. I wanted to show or respond to one question that came up last week. So we was Councilman Norfelt, you'd asked about the, if there was a plan for the trail. And so we do have a conceptual for that. It's not finalized yet, but I thought I would share that drawing here. So along the right-hand side of the screen, this orange over here is where the Mountain View Quarter Trail is. When you have the trail that would go, goes under the ninety, so the idea was it would parallel this extension of fifty nine hundred west up until you hit the south side of Beasley Road and then cross at that point. And then so the area we're referring to, that's part of this application is all along this, essentially this front edge here on the south side of Beasley.
The developers needs to keep the Ritter Ryder Canal going through their property.
Right, it's, what they indicated to me was that, while technically it's possible, just it's cost prohibitive. It's just the cost to relocate the canal is, it's very expensive.
They be open to allowing the trail to go through their property as they're, they're keeping the canal?
Yeah, so their, their preference should be where the city has the right of way. So we do have fifteen feet of right of way on the south side of Beasley that was reserved specifically for the trail, that it would in parallel as shown in this, or parallel the street. So, and so to that, in the development agreement, we've added and spoken with Ivory, who's the property owner, so previously, there were two options that were presented, so now there's just the one. So the first, there's again, they would put in the cul-de-sac at the end of Stegner. There would be no vehicular access to Stegner, and then the third is that they would build the, the trail. So you'd have a five-foot park strip and then a ten-foot concrete trail along the south side of Beasley that would essentially go from the edge to edge of their property, east to west edge of their property. And again, in speaking with them, they were open to having that in the, in the development agreement.
And the no access is forever?
Correct, right. There's, there's no, there's no provision of that changing.
Okay. They'll continue the wall or the fence, whatever, on that south property line?
So we could, as part of the conditional use, we could look at how, how that would be done, but it doesn't specify like a wall, it just said they can't have access. So we would, that's something we'd work out as part of the condition use permit, because they're, they're required to have a condition use permit, given the size of the project.
So do you have any idea what fencing they're putting on that south end?
So any place where you have the industrial against your agricultural zoning or residential use, or any kind of agricultural residential zoning or use, it's required to be a concrete, a six-foot concrete wall that is separated.
So does the school, the school qualify for that?
I believe the school is zoned agriculture is what I recall.
Okay. Okay, seeing no more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on tonight's agenda?
Is this item on tonight's agenda? It's on.
No, it'll be next two weeks.
It's correct. It's not, it's just studied tonight.
Okay. Yeah. But really, we're taking care of that first public carrying item, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So no more questions on that one? Okay. Then we'll go to our resolutions and turn the time over to Chief Jacobs for Resolution twenty-three dash seventy-five.
Good evening, Pauline Jacobs, Chief of Police. I come before you today with an interlocal agreement between West Valley City and Taylorsville City for SWAT services. This would create, create an integrated team with West Valley providing officers, Taylorsville providing officers, and that team providing SWAT-related services to both jurisdictions.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
So we currently have SWAT services in our city, right?
We do.
Is this expanding, or is it just consolidating with Taylorsville?
This is a a mutually beneficial agreement in that SWAT is a very labor-intensive, training-intensive assignment. It's also a voluntary collateral assignment, so there's a high rate of burnout. So we're having a hard time getting folks who want to participate in this particular collateral assignment. So by Taylorsville coming on board and providing bodies and equipment for their people, it just helps balance it out.
Do they have a SWAT team already, or?
They have not had one since they reclaimed their police department. You know what I mean? Um. The last couple of years, they have contracted with West Jordan and DPS's combined team. But that, that contract was not renewed, and they have members of their particular police department that would like to be on the SWAT team. So this seemed like a good solution for both of us.
How often is the SWAT team deployed?
Let me introduce you to Deputy Chief Brandon Christianson. He is my SWAT subject matter expert.
Over the past three to five years, we've responded between thirty and thirty-six incidents within West Valley. Last year, I think, was Taylorsville's first year of being their own PD again, and I believe that so obviously with us being able to go, that might go up a few more, but not significantly.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you. We will now turn the time to Mr. Erickson for Resolution twenty-three dash seventy-six, purchase of equipment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so the issue, this issue is, as you can see, is the replacement of the playground at Country Metals Park. It was built in nineteen ninety-five, so it's twenty-seven years old. It's just reaching the, the end of its useful life, and we're, we applied for and received CDBG grant funding last year, so it'll be fully funded by CD, CDBG grant monies. So as part of it, we'll be replacing, right now it has a sand impact surface under it. We'll be replacing that with the turf that we've been putting underneath our, our new, our new playgrounds. I will also be putting a ramp down into it that it has not had before, it's, before it's kind of just gone in from the, from the side and is kind of limited the number of features that limited mobility, mobility people are able to utilize. So we're going to make it so it's, so it's more, more usable by more people. So, so that will be part of it. We'll also be putting in some exercise equipment. So those, so parents, when they come and they bring their kids, or they can, they have something to do other than just sit on a bench and, and watch, or they can actually get healthy hopefully as, as well, and, and and keep an eye on their kids. So, but with that, so you can see the cost there is, is is two seventy-three, four eighty-five, and again, it's all funded from CDBG grant monies.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Johnson. He has two items, Resolution twenty-three seventy-seven and twenty-three seventy-eight.
Good afternoon. This first item is a request by our solid waste contractor, Ace Disposal, for an increase, a fee increase that we paid them, I believe, Eric, I need, have you put that up, if that's the case? I've prepared a graphic that is in your packet, and Eric will open up that kind of illustrates kind of the life of their contract and how things are looking right now, and I made it small enough that you can't read probably, so I apologize for that. But on the left side of this graph is, that's the, the dollar value of what we pay for the professional services to our contractor, and on the right-hand side is the percentage growth. The left-hand side corresponds with the bar charts, and the right-hand side corresponds with the line, and the line represents the, the fees. That bottom light blue line is the contractual two-and-a-half percent fee increase that we give the contractor every year. That's, that exists in the contract currently. And as you'll recall, this time last year, Ace Disposal came to us and requested an additional two-and-a-half percent because we were seeing eight to nine percent inflation year over year, and they were struggling with their costs, and, and so the council agreed to amend their contract and give them an additional two-and-a-half percent, which is represented by that darker blue line just up above. Well, this year, while we are not seeing eight, nine percent inflation, as represented by the little graph on the bottom, we, we are seeing, it's, you know, we're seeing about, it's five percent year over year from this time to last, this time, from now this year, from this time now, to a year ago, is about five percent. And so really, this is a request that Ace has made. We are not obligated to do this. I recommend that we do simply because Ace is a, is a good partner and has provided good service, and in good faith has made this request, and additionally, they mentioned that if they, if, you know, we did see inflation rates drop below the two-and-a-half percent, they would be willing to reduce their fee increase that they're due by, that they're owed by contract in future years. And as a reminder of our contract lifecycle, it is, our, our original term of the contract expires in July of twenty twenty-four, and by the contract, if we have, if we decide that we would like to terminate the contract and not extend the additional two years that are built into the contract, then, then we would need to let them know in July of twenty twenty-three. Again, I would not recommend we do that. I think we're getting good service from Ace. And I don't feel like that that would be a thing that we should, would do, but I think it's something to be aware of. And then the contract has two additional years built into it, which would get us to July of twenty twenty-six, when we would start with a new contractor. So maybe this is my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
To the council.
This increase will cost about eighty thousand dollars a year, roughly.
Okay. And then how many more increases do they have before the end of the contract?
So they have this increase, and then there would be two more for the two additional contract years.
Okay.
And theoretically, if, if inflation seems to wind down, then, then they won't be asking for, hopefully, we're not doing this again, but.
But will we do our obligated two-and-a-half, or if it doesn't go up, they'll say, never mind, we don't need that?
Well, they, in good faith, they mentioned that if we do see, in, you know, if it drops well below the, the two-and-a-half percent that's built into the contract, then they would certainly work with us on, on having a fee increase that was less than the detract from two-and-a-half percent.
And then on bulky waste day, are they examining what they're picking up and only picking up certain things, or do they just pick up everything and they don't care about the environmental hazards?
They won't pick up tires and things that they're not supposed to pick up. Bulky waste is pretty easy because right there, and they can generally see it.
Right.
And so they should not be. But maybe there's a reason for your question.
No, he was just, I watched it, I was stopped at a stop sign, and I just watched him, and he had, there was a box on the curb, and he just looked at every item, and then threw it in, and then the bag. I thought it looked like a grout bag, but I don't know. So he was just looking at everything, so I didn't know if we need to put out a list of what you cannot put out there.
And we do have that information on our website.
Okay.
It's made available to the public and so yeah, but I think they do a pretty thorough job of inspecting what they
Yeah.
what they will and won't take, because it's pretty easy with bulky waste.
Okay. Perfect. Seeing no other questions, should we go to twenty-three seventy-eight?
Let's do it. So this is a contract that we are bringing to the city council for authorization to execute for micro surface. This is a pavement maintenance treatment that we are proposing on these two roads, thirty-two hundred west from forty-one hundred south, forty-seven hundred south, and thirty-six hundred west in the same extents. Micro surface is a pavement preservation technique that's similar to slurry seal. It's just a, it's a chemical break, meaning that it, it's versus a water break. It doesn't have to evaporate out. It actually sets up by a chemical process that enables them to get in and out of roads a lot quicker than they do on slurry seals. It enables us to use it on main roads. And we're exploring the use of this process in our own, by our own forces, but this is, these two roads will be installed by the contractor as part of our evaluation process of this treatment system. And so when we open the bids, the, the bid, we only received one bid from Intermountain Slurry Seal, and it was roughly four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And we looked at the, as, as we examined the bid, we, we learned that a little over a hundred thousand dollars of that bid was striping, and, which was a lot of money and extremely overpriced, and we mutually agreed with Intermountain Slurry Seal to remove all striping from that contract, and we will assume the responsibility with our new striping contractor to stripe the road, which I anticipate will cost less than twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So now I'm kind of a good opportunity for us there, and, and and we, anyways, we recommend that you award this contract.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Well, thank you for touching that savings.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll go to our incentive agenda. Mr. Pyle?
Thanks, ma'am. This is not an item that would be really out of the ordinary either, but it is, remember, right? No, no, I'm thinking of the one that's on the regular agenda. So yeah, this is just a warranty deed for over on two oh one, six three, eleven west. Just a little bit of right-of-way acquired, so it's a warranty need situation, but there's no cost attached to it as it shows.
So on our agenda, it says sixty-six eleven, and on this paper, it's sixty-three eleven. Okay. Any questions on this item? Okay. We will now go to our communications and turn the time over to Ms. Day for our project updates.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. It's good to be here and to be able to talk a little bit about some of the amazing things that we've got going on with our parks and green infrastructure. So I wanted to, we'll just jump right in here. First, I want to go over, and you've heard me talk about this before, the value of parks and green infrastructure within our city, and all of the amazing things it does. For example, the environmental, you know, this is everything from the oxygen, lowering the temperature, helping with pollution, the biodiversity, which really helps the ecosystem, right? All of those types of things that really make a difference. You've heard me say before that one acre of natural turf actually provides oxygen for up to sixty-four people per day. So there's some significant value just for the infrastructure itself that we see here. Health and wellness, these benefits, and there's many, many for those. These are attributed, studies have been done to show that it's not just the people in the parks using the park amenities, but even just being present there and being around that type of environment makes a difference, both mentally and physically, lowering blood pressure, all kinds of things, right? And then, of course, we all know the social benefits, the cohesion, the connectivity that people have within our community, whether it's their own families or outside their families, different demographics, and all of that. A lot of economic value, increase in property taxes that we get because of the increased property value. Those dollars help to offset the cost of maintaining and taking care of these spaces for our community. And then the values of play, and you can see the top-left picture and the bottom-right picture. There's seniors playing, and then there's some kids playing, and really, I, I put that because sometimes people think the value of play is just for the kids, but it really isn't. It's for everybody that engages, whether it's pickleball or, or any other type of player activity. Those benefits, those values, they're attributed to everybody that's there, and that's your community. And so, you know, I wanted to, to thank you for your support of these things that we're trying to accomplish and really make a better place for your community. And to say it a little bit better, I have a one-and-a-half minute, I promise it's really short video. And this was done by the National Recreation and Parks Association a few years ago, but still quite there, so.
In every community, there is a place where people of all backgrounds can gather to talk, exercise, learn, or relax. In every community, there are parks. The economic value of park systems are vast. Using just five studies completed in the last five years, municipal park systems located in Ohio, New York, North Carolina, Washington, and Colorado delivered more than five-point-four billion dollars in economic value. Parks have economic power. Parks protect and conserve biodiversity while keeping our air and water clean. Parks have environmental power. Access to parks and recreation facilities aids in the control of obesity, helps diminish the risk of disease, and can increase life expectancy. Parks have health power. Parks increase social capital. Park-like public spaces encourage residents to leave the isolation of their apartments, socialize with one another, and form lasting ties. Parks have community power. In Macon, Georgia, a revitalized park that included new programming and beautification efforts reduced incidents of crime and violence by fifty percent. Parks have safety power. Parks have the power to strengthen communities, transform lives, and protect the future. Fact is, parks are the most powerful aspect of every community. Share the power of parks with yours. Learn more about the power of parks at nrpa.org.
Hey, so let's talk about the parks in our community here. So as you know, we have a goal of a ten-minute walk to a park from each home or residence. And we're not quite there yet. We're just right around fifty-six percent, but we're, we're getting closer, and you'll see that in some of these projects that I'm going to talk about today. These national performance standards are what has been established across the country, and obviously, there's going to be some flexibility with that. I just wanted you to be aware of, of what is out there for that. And according to our population, we should have just over fifteen hundred acres of parkland. We currently have three hundred and seventy-four with our existing parks, the ones you'll see on this list, and then also Salt Lake County parks. So we've included all of that in there as park acreage. The number of parks, we should have sixty-three. And with these that I'll show you, and the county parks were at forty-three, so not, not too bad there, right? Not too bad. Still have a little ways to go, but that's really good. And I apologize, I know that this is kind of difficult to read, and if you'd like, I'm happy to break this down a little bit easier and email it to you guys. But you can see how this is broken down with city parks, future parks, county parks, as they are color-coded, and you know, hopefully, that's a little helpful, especially as you look at your districts and different things as well. So let's go ahead and talk about some of the projects that are just exciting, you're going to see this summer. We have our RC crawler course, so you've been familiar with some of the weekly updates of the, the RC track competitions that we've had indoors. The crawler course is a larger RC vehicle that crawls over the rocks and over different things like that, and there is not a course in the valley and the Wasatch Front specifically for this in a park. These are a bunch of volunteers. We have a ton of volunteers that are coming and helping, which is why you see the cost at four thousand dollars, right? We, they, they've done a lot of work. It's going to be very nice. It's out at Centennial, and we'll have a ribbon cutting for that in early June, probably in just a few weeks, you'll see that happening, and we'll invite you out, and you get to try your hand on the crawlers and see how you do. The next one is Rocky Ridge. And so you may be familiar, there's the address on that. This is not quite one-and-a-half acres. It is funded by impact fees, and it is estimated to be completed in June as well. So both of those will be opening fairly quick to each other. The only change on this diagram from what we were actually able to do is on kind of the left-hand side, you see that forty-yard dash. We had to remove that just for funding reasons. But everything else there is, is the same, and it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun. You'll notice there's a a slide that's, that little leg that pokes out on the bottom left, there's going to be stairs, but there's and kind of windy, it's going to be ADA compliant, but there's also going to be a slide about halfway down for the kids to get down the rest of the way, and very unique, using the topography of the layout there, so it'll be fun. All right, so we have our Westview Expansion. As you recall, this is, this was funded in part with a grant from the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant, plus some impact fees for this one. And on this one, we did listen to council suggestions to have the parking lot, which is the phase two, and then the phase one is the actual product. This one does have the forty-yard dash, and it also has the Ninja Course or the Challenge Course as part of it. So you'll see both of those getting completed on this project. This will be done, as it says there, in August. So we'll get specific dates as we get a little bit closer with the contractors, but that's where we're at. This is the bike park that's going to be out at Centennial. You've heard me talk about a few times. We did have to change, and I don't know, can you see my cursor? Oh, yes, you can. Perfect. We did, oops, sorry, there we go. Okay, this area right here, this is thirty-one at the top, fifty-six to the left. We originally had a little bit of a loop in there, you may recall that. There were a few reasons that we had to take that out, at least for right now, till we do further analysis, and I'll, I'll show you in a second on that. Because of that, we kind of beefed up some of the other areas of the track, and I, I made a list here, so I wouldn't forget some of those. So the jump line is just over fifty percent longer with side-by-side sender variables for that. The pump track is a little bit larger, as you can see in here, and there's actually a, a kind of a wellride on that as well. Elevated start hub with a tunnel underneath, and then we have three Gabian bridges. Instead of the two, and one of them actually has rollers with it, so it's, it's going to be very nice. And then a themed tunnel in the bicycle playground. So. So let me kind of show you, you'll be able to see here, this is why we had to eliminate the part that went a little further northwest. This isn't like this all the time, but it, but it is enough off and on to where we didn't want to put money into something that might get damaged from that. So that, when we get to a point where we might be able to take it to the next step and put something, it will be called a rock line. So if it does get underwater, it's not going to destroy it in any way, it just wouldn't be usable, obviously, during this time of the year. So that's kind of where we're at. You can see in these pictures a little bit more detail, it's kind of hard to see, you can see up here, the kind of the starting area, you can see the tunnel, this is one of the gabion bridges here. This is the, the new pump track that's a little bit bigger, it's all asphalt, so that remains. And then some of the side-by-side features as well. You can see right in here, as a matter of fact, whereas one side will be more for beginners, the other side will be more intermediate, advanced bikers. So what, that was one of the key things we really wanted to focus on, was that anybody would be able to use it and enjoy it, so. All right, you just heard from Jason about Country Meadows Playground Replacement. This is going to be very nice and something that the community will really enjoy in that neighborhood. Estimated completion on that is August 2023 as well. Again, we got a lot happening this summer, lots of fun stuff. You heard me talk about this a couple of weeks ago on the lighting, that's also track funds with the city match out at Centennial Park for the pickleball complex as well as the skate park, so that will be lit as well. Completion on that is somewhere between August and September because the, with Musco, they have to order in, and of course, they couldn't do that till after approval, that was last week. So we're hoping that it comes a little bit quicker, but right now, that's the estimate that we've been given for that. And just to point out, so you saw that with the track funds, and you've seen me talk about that in a couple of other projects. There's nine projects here that I'm talking about, five of them have funding from grants, at least in part. So that really helps a lot with offsetting costs and makes a big difference in, you know, with us trying to provide services for our community. Sunset Hills Wood Hollow, so we had to change the design slightly. You may recall that in the center area, we had the pavilion and playground, but because of the corridor, they wanted us to shift that a little bit, which is completely fine and understandable. This is being paid by impact fees, and this will be sometime, hopefully, next spring before it's done. It might be a little bit into summer again, depending on what kind of winter season we have this year. That's kind of what really makes a difference there. Newton Farm is the very next project after that, so the order has not changed in those things since I presented last time. Again, we have the design, once we have further impact fee funds in place, this is the next one that's going to be taken care of. And so that's just, that's one of those things, we don't really know exactly how much is going to come in each year from impact fees, and that's what we're waiting on for Newton Farms. The Wetland Storm Park, Stormwater Park, excuse me, this is that 72-acre park right by the crosstown trail system that was talked about earlier. This is, we're just seeking funding everywhere we can to try to fund this. In November, we received a $2 million ARPA grant, and then a couple of weeks ago, we received another $750,000 from the Utah Outdoor Recreation Funds. And so we're just plugging away, you know, so design has started. We had to make a couple minor changes in here from the last time you saw it, but overall, it's really, really pretty similar. So Phase One will be starting soon, documents will be ready to go out to bid, and then we'll be bringing that information over to you. Again, you can remember the partners we have with the school districts, Utah State, a lot of nonprofits because of the equestrian amenities here and the trails for that. We've had, oh, what are they called, the hoofbeats to healing, heading home, the National Ability Center up in the Park City area, as well as Valley Mental Health. We have a lot of adaptive groups that are really, really interested in using this, and a lot of seniors. We're working with, of course, the Aging Division of Salt Lake County, Active Aging, as well as their adaptive side. So there's going to be a lot of different things here, besides just the natural enjoyment and the native species, whether it's plants or animals, watching, you know, areas for that, educational signage for people to know what they're looking at, what's happening. There's, it's going to be tremendous for the community, tremendous, and not anything that you've seen like this in the Wasatch Front here in the valley, so. And then here's some of the Salt Lake County projects, just a slight update on those, not a lot, but the Regional Trail, I mentioned last time I presented this, about the $10 million allotment that Salt Lake County got with the crosstown trail, or what they call the Ritter Canal Trail. I know Public Works has worked with them a little bit on this as well with funding, but the dollars coming from all of this really are helping to complete that trail. Utah Salt Lake Canal Trail, I believe, is finished now in our city, in our area. Lodestone Regional Dog Park, we're still waiting on the final phase for the dog park area that's designed for there. And so I stay in contact with them to try to get that. And then here's a couple pictures of the Pioneer Crossing Park that's down by the Cultural Celebration Center. That, the, the dates have shifted a little bit, now it looks like they're planning on a ribbon cutting and completion in July, probably around the middle of the month. I promise I will make sure that you guys are all aware of when that's happening, so you can be present for that. But you can see there's docks, there's trails, there's restrooms, which includes a storage area for our police department, to have some equipment in there that they maybe can use on the trail systems. So we're excited about this addition into our community as well. Sorry, I'm not sure why I was doing that. Okay, here's some other projects that we have that are not on these lists right now because we're not actively working on them. You can see some of these are smaller in size, you can see the Brock Family Park is in there as well. The, the Operation My Hometown Park, again, that's one of those projects where we need to seek funding, we can't use impact fees for that. Veterans Memorial Park, just a variety. The Utah Sport Field property is on Parkway, just west of the Mountain View Quarter. So there's some land there that UDOT has allotted to give to the city, and the 14 acres would make some really nice additional sports parks or fields, excuse me, that could be used for that. And then my final slide, you'll be able to see some pictures here on the right of our park maintenance guys working on all of the different things that they work on. You know, you can see some of the information on the left with the number of acres maintained, those 14 city facility grounds, so those are building grounds, city hall, the fire stations, although they mow, the irrigation, the trees, some of those types of things. It's about 50 acres that they, that they add to their list with those properties. Almost eight miles of street trees that we put in as the streetscapes, of course, the snow removal, the trees. I always love looking at the value of our mature trees of over $4 million for those, so we take a lot of pride in taking care of those. The divisions, again, you've heard this, irrigation, turf and agronomy, which is the mowing crews, right? There's one full-time person for that, and then seasonals. So while we have a harder time finding seasonals right now, some of the other staff have to kind of help out and leave their areas. We even had Jason on a more, what, a week ago, helping out, out at Centennial, trying to do what we could there. And then, let's see, the facilities in construction, so this is anything from playground inspections to taking care of the restrooms or the pavilions or the fences or anything that's basically not turf or irrigation, right? These guys take care of. And then forestry and horticulture, and yeah, flower beds, shrubs, of course, trees, all of that fall into that category there. And you can see the number of staff that we have below, we do still contract with a company to do some smaller parcels of land to help out with that, and we've been successful with that. And I kind of finished with these final pictures on there because it's wonderful, see the work that our park maintenance guys do, they are passionate about what they do, they wish they could do more. They truly care about what they put into these parks because it's personal to them. But they get even more joy, we all get more joy when we see the people using them and enjoying them, so wanted to throw those in. So with that, that's all that I had, I don't know if there's any questions that I can help answer, or you're good?
Any questions?
Um. And we, and we sell park property?
Yes.
I would suggest we sell Sugar Plum Park, the, the future Sugar Plum Park. Sugar Plum already has open space all the way through it, and then we could use that money for developing other parks or maybe paying down our $15 million bond that we learned about last week.
Right, and, and I don't know, I would defer, obviously, to our city manager and also to maybe get more information from Steve on what the, you know, what it could be used for, you know, if, if you've been out there, you probably have, you've seen the topography of that area and what it would look like, and I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't have the information on that to be able to provide.
Yeah, if there was interest in the council to pursue that, we'd go get that information. Shorter answer is yes, there are various restrictions on various pieces of property, deed restrictions based on how we acquired them, that sort of thing, which I don't remember on that particular one, so we'd have to go look at that.
So are these upcoming projects in order of how they're going to be completed?
No, that final slide that had all those listed, no, and I should have done that, I apologize. And, and I can do that for you, and that's certainly not a problem. I will say sometimes, like, you see some that are a half an acre, that are really tiny, and the type of park that it might be, like a trailhead, for example, right? Is going to cost less than a groomed park would cost, right? So if, if there was a couple hundred thousand, we might want to knock one of those off, it just kind of depends. But I'm happy to do that, we have the years of when the property was acquired, and we try to follow that just as much as we possibly can.
Okay, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
If you don't mind doing that.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you so much.
You bet, thank you.
Oh, wait, one more question.
Yes.
Every minute. Do we have internet at all of our parks? Do we have Utopia?
We, I believe we have it, we, I know we have it at most of the parks. I think that I.
We don't necessarily have it at all the acreage of all the parks.
That's true.
We stopped at one point when the cost of installing the equipment is more than, you know, sort of marginal return, and then once we got availability to all the residences within the city.
And, and I know that we've, oh, sorry, 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 I, I know that we bumped it up a little bit in some of the, like, at Centennial around, to make sure around the sports fields and things for that, for the purposes of the tournaments that come in, or the parents, that kind of thing. We especially needed to do some of that as we were getting off of the pandemic.
So we've got a particular place.
Yeah.
Parkway Park.
At Parkway, I think.
You know?
I think Eric's looking it up right now.
The ability, awesome.
Yes. It does, okay. Yeah.
Give you?
Okay. Add information, we'll, we'll get a list together so that you know where we're at with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to the council calendar, is there anyone that had any concerns on that one?
Yeah, I have a question about the election registration days.
It's June 1st through June 7th.
But I haven't seen it.
I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, put in the calendar, the OHS.
And then, are we advertising that on Facebook or anywhere, like normal?
We will be, yep. We here, I, I reached out to Sam's group, yeah, Sam's group last week, and they were putting together a graphic, so we'll be doing that weekly up until the end of the filing period.
Which is really only next Thursday.
June 7th is the end.
And then next week, not June?
June 1st is, so it begins next Thursday, June 1st, and then, so we'll have it before then, if it hasn't been posted already, I can double check. Okay, I thought, I thought you said it was going to go on Monday, so, and then we'll do it again at the end of this week, and then the beginning of next week. Yeah, he has some scheduled days that will post, but.
Yeah, because I saw it from 2021, but not from this one. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no concerns with the calendar, potential future agenda items? Yes?
Well, just a question, and maybe we can talk about it at a future agenda, but are there policies or procedures that maybe staff could talk to us about to avoid sort of what happened last regular meeting, just if there's procedures that we can implement to avoid that kind of.
To support people out sooner, or what it was your concern?
I, I don't know, I'm, so I'm asking, what, what tools do we have available to not violate someone's rights to public meeting and still maintain that?
I seem to remember in the back of my head, and dinosaurs have very little brains. But I seem to remember in the back of my head that we had at one time on our agenda, part that you read about five minutes, something about comportment, why, how and why somebody would be refused access or whatever. And I talked to Nicole about it, she said she'll look back in the histories of those agendas since they have one reported somewhere.
And I know we put up kind of a, we had an agenda item where we set a resolution to kind of narrow in when we would stop the meeting and walk out, different things like that, and we may need a refresher from Eric as to what we can and can't do there.
But I, I seem to remember that we had that actually published, looking at that at one point.
Have it on the agenda itself?
Just, just like what you read right now.
Yeah. So Eric, do you want to come answer questions of what we can legally and can't legally do with somebody's First Amendment rights?
I, I could definitely do that, I, I wonder, because there's some security measures and some potential things, if we might want to do that in a closed session at some point.
Okay. I think that would be wise.
And then I think it also would be helpful to understand, like, listened on KSL a few days ago, how St. George is completely eliminated there. So what are the rights and rules surrounding?
So they're allowing written comment to come in, but no in-person public comment. Is what I understood from KSL, that doesn't mean it's true.
Some of that written comment, like the.
Like an email or something?
You got about the trees that I fully agree with, living on that street and having neighbors with, who love to cultivate those trees and you put their seeds low all over my lawn.
I, I had a young woman in the greenhouse that was so proud that her great-grandfather brought the very first elm tree to West Valley and planted it, and how we all should be so thankful for that, and I just politely smiled and said, yeah, that's nice, wanting to say, where's he at? Let's go dig them all up, but some people are proud of the elm trees.
I know.
Sad as it is. So. Okay.
Are we prepared today to do the, the close to?
Did you do that after this meeting? Okay. All right. Any other future agenda items?
Just, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry. Um, first, code enforcement. Of course, things are starting to grow. I just wonder if we can get a number of first notices sent out in May, and then also an update on the ALJ committee process, and then also an update on the code enforcement procedure manual that. For, so let's go, and then second is in relation to our bond information that we got last week, can we get a report of all the bonds that the city has and their original balance, current balance, payment schedule, and prepayment penalties? So then we all have an idea of how good or ugly it looks. how good or ugly it looks.
Okay.
That's it. Second.
Okay, looks like there's four that want that. Code manual, we've asked, you've asked for in the past? Is that what you said, or you're just?
About in the past that we would have a code procedure manual. That was part of, we've spent months that we've talked about this, but yeah.
Okay. Have it on a future agenda item?
So I, I can actually give you the code update right now. You'd like the, the bond one, of course, we can also do that. That'll take some more time to do that, but I'm sure the council's okay with that. The ALJ update, I can tell you, we have drafted some uh, camera who is ordinance or procedural changes, ordinance cases, which we will be bringing to you. I'm also already interviewing uh, potential citizen candidates for that. And then we also issued an RFP for the, the new ALJ. So that part's accomplished and moving forward. Uh, we are gonna bring any ordinance changes to you kind of at the same time, so we wouldn't have brought you the ALJ one yet because there's another couple of ordinance changes that have to go through Planning Commission, and they're on the Planning Commission's schedule uh, now. So once they get, those are the Title VII changes. Once those come there, get through there, then we bring all that to you. So we're probably like a month-ish out from that, I'd say. And then as far as the procedural changes we're making, we're actually by practice and implementing them now, anyway, knowing we are already in the girl season, so. Uh, Lane's training his people on those and they're out um, putting those into place.
And we can get a, the manual, you know, some written procedure.
Written procedures for sure. I, I never collected that we were doing a whole manual or anything like that.
Manual is a
Yeah.
loose term.
Right, right. But written procedures.
Procedures for.
Yeah. So that's all in the works and proceeding uh, forward. And like I said, we're putting those changes as we understand it into effect. Uh, anyway, as those are.
No clarification?
Nope. I was just remembering, we asked for the main violations to be in one spot, so people could look and see what the violations were.
Website.
Well, and even in our ordinance, I think if you want to look up the ordinance, you should be able, instead of having to go to twenty-six different places, have one location that then has the referencing ordinances.
I think that's, depending on how you do the website, we could just have hyperlinks that go to all.
That's our, glad you brought that up.
However, that is done in the real world.
So we're doing that as well. We've got that wrapped in and in place. We've actually already reviewed a couple of versions of that, and they do basically what was just discussed. They link you to the code section that applies to the offense or the notice that you would have gotten.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, council reports. Okay.
Noticed when I walked in, had a little bit of a swagger. It's because last week I graduated from citizens academy. So, thank you to uh, people supporting that, and I heard nothing from uh, but good comments from the other participants who just said, like, every week was off the charts. Great, so. They're good.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Then uh, we, we both actually envisioned Utah breakfast.
Okay.
It was all about water. So last year was all about water, cuz we didn't have any in the years, cuz we've got too much.
They don't think we have too much yet. They're not, they don't believe that yet, so.
Yeah.
When Lake Powell's full, then we can maybe talk about too much more. So conservation's still a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, we should encourage conservation on our website as well. I mean, if we can, if everybody can cut another ten percent off this year, then we'll have enough year for next year, no matter what the winter does. If it's a bad winter, we'll still have enough water. If it's a great winter, maybe we'll fill all the lakes. So conservation's still very, very important. Okay. Um, strategic plan, strategic discussion list. Did anybody have anything from there they wanted to bring up? I know we got an email from Mr. Pyle about the archives of all the collections. Everybody want to, I'll put that off a week. Okay. Um, okay, now we'll review our agenda items for next week for the redevelopment agency, the housing authority, and the housing authority, nope, the municipal building authority.
Yes, thank you. So this is on here just for the purpose of noticing for the budget approval on June sixth. There's nothing new, nothing's changed or, or
From the last.
Aren't any new, right, there aren't any new ones.
Okay, did anybody have any questions on those budgets? Okay, thank you. So we do have a need for a closed session that will be for security. You would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, sorry, roll call vote. Sorry, Nicole. Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northout?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon? Councilman Hugh?
Yes.
And Mary Lee?
Yes.
Motion path is unanimous. We'll take five minutes to empty the room and then Chris Pyle would have staff that he needs here stay. Otherwise, we'll